Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. I would ask, is anyone else recording this meeting? Seeing none, if you'd please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seeing no citizens to comment, we will move right on to special recognitions. Dr. Hanfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we are starting with some special recognitions. In the Zoom audience is Mr. Greg Desto, Auburn Middle School principal, and Mrs. Karen Loach, 8th grade science teacher at Auburn Middle School, joining us tonight, obviously via Zoom. And we asked Mrs. Loach to be with us, to recognize her for having been awarded the Best Graduate Student Paper Award for presenting a portion of her dissertation at the Eastern Education Association's annual conference in Florida last winter. Her paper was titled "Science in Elementary Education: Teacher Self-Efficacy, Preparation, and Student Achievement." The award will be presented to her at the Association's virtual conference in February, and her paper will be published in the Journal of Research and Education, which, let me just say, is a fairly prestigious journal. So I'd like to congratulate you personally, Mrs. Loach. We've talked a lot about your work in the past few years.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, so congratulations on that. And maybe if you want to talk a little bit about your work to the committee, that would be great.
Sure, so my dissertation work, you can have me okay, hopefully. My dissertation work surrounded looking at the teaching efficacy of elementary school teachers as it pertains to science education. And when I say teaching efficacy, I mean how they feel when they're teaching science. Do they feel effective? And does that affect the outcome, the student outcomes? And this is not an issue that's really just in the United States. This is a global issue. I found research from, really, from around the globe, Turkey and Sweden and Japan, that elementary school teachers don't really feel that they are ready to teach science, and specifically, the new science standards. So I looked at, I know how these teachers felt, and what are the possible interventions that can be done to help them feel better and therefore impact student achievement overall.
Excellent.
In a nutshell.
Excellent. So this award ceremony is going to be virtual in February?
Yes, yes, it will be.
Great.
Any comments from the board?
Through the chair, that's amazing. Great job. I think science is so important, especially, I have three little ones in the younger grades, and I know how much they love science, so, great work.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Congratulations, it's amazing.
Congratulations. My daughter loves her class, so you're doing something right.
Good to hear.
Thank you for coming in this evening. We're Zooming in this evening. Yeah, we're all very proud of you, and you represent that district very well. Very impressive, Karen.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm proud to be a member of the Auburn Public Schools family.
We love having you. Anything else, Dr. Hanfield?
Not with Mrs. Loach. Next to Mrs. Loach on the screen, this evening, we've invited Mrs. Kim Siccarella to join us. As you know, and as we discussed in the past, we talked about, you know, social-emotional welfare of our students being such a critical component of their education so that they can access, you know, their academic work. And part of that therapy, we've now started to include therapy dogs. And as you know, we talked about, we're kind of piloting the use of a therapy dog at Auburn Middle School. So as I had talked with you a couple of weeks ago, Mrs. Kim Siccarella, who's with us this evening. Hi, Kim. And her dog Ella recently finished training to be a therapy dog. And we invited her here to talk a little bit about that. Now, Kim, before I turn it over to you, I do have the video. Do you want me to show that?
It's up to you. I just figured, you know, she probably wouldn't be that great on Zoom, but the video did show her in action at the middle school.
All right.
She's so cute.
Oh, my God.
So that's Ella, everybody. And, Kim, I'll turn it over to you if you want to kind of talk a little bit about the process and, you know, a little bit more in depth about how we came upon therapy dogs and the training and what you're up to now, having Ella in school for about a month. That'd be great.
Right, so I had become interested in the use of therapy dogs, so I did some research and presented it last year to Dr. Brunell, you know, with, you know, some of the research articles on the benefits of the therapy dogs. And then I found someone who does really good training with the dogs. I wanted it to be a good program, not just, you know, you can get certificates in the mail, but I wanted it to be an actual program. So we went and undertaking, it was about a year to get through the process. COVID kind of interrupted the, you know, being in public with other dogs and animals and people and that kind of stuff. So the training was completed, you know, end of summer, and then we did our final exam in the fall, so she was able to pass all of those tests. And then we started bringing her into school. As you can tell today, she's a little tired from her days. She has the best schedule ever. She only works Tuesdays, Thursdays. She has long weekends, and she has a nap around 10:00 a.m., so she's got a pretty good schedule when she's there. You know, the kids have loved her. I think it's been great for the staff so far. You know, it's just been a nice breath of fresh air in a year that's pretty challenging, so, so far, so good. And everyone else seems really excited about, you know, bringing it to other schools and having their dogs trained, and soon we'll have dogs everywhere, which is good.
That's great. Any comments?
Through the chair, I can say my oldest is having such a challenge with COVID learning, and starting last year and this year. And unfortunately, my dog would never be a good therapy dog because he loves squirrels. But the only way that she's getting through this is through the use of our cat and dog. So to see that in school, it almost tears me up because I know how important, you know, social-emotional learning is. And animals especially, you know, they don't really care about anything else except for love and support. And, you know, she's got a cat or a dog next to her at all times, and it's getting her through, and so I think it's amazing. And I do have to say, I did tell her about this dog, and she wants to go to 6th grade now. She's only in 3rd, so I don't know if that'll happen, but she's very, I mean, it's the only way she's getting through, so that's amazing.
Any other comments?
Thank you for your sacrifice, too. It's a lot of work, I'm sure. But my daughter's thrilled having Ella there, so it's made her day, definitely.
Same, definitely. I think you're pretty lucky, too. You get to bring your dog to work. That's amazing. Super cute. Thank you so much for everything you're doing.
Oh, Kim, that's great. Thanks for being the dog handler. And I would just echo what Dr. McCullough said. You know, you couldn't find a better support system than a dog. You've got a whole bunch of dog lovers, right, on this committee? I think it's unanimous. So I think it's fantastic. The art work was also fantastic. I really enjoyed that. The kids must absolutely love it. And hopefully, we get a whole pack of them before too long.
Through the chair, can your dog really go into the cafeteria and not eat all the food?
She, we have lunch in our classrooms, but she's trained as far as that. Like, she won't eat food on, like, that's part of the training. They can see the food, they just can't eat it. So she's pretty good with that. Occasional goldfish, she might get off the floor, but...
Great job.
That's awesome.
And through the chair, Mr. Desto, I know you put a shirt and tie on kind of late tonight for us, so if you'd like to have a little bit of input as the leader of the building.
Yeah, so I had to, it was tough finding a shirt and tie to match my Adidas sweatpants. I would just like, I'll start, I'd like to go backwards and start with Ella and Mrs. Siccarella. And on a comical note, Mrs. Siccarella is finding out what it feels like to be the second banana. Because we had a student one time, and she said, "Well, who's my counselor?" And I said, "Well," I said, "it's Mrs. Siccarella." And she said, "Well, I want to see the counselor with the dog." And I said, "Oh, well, this so happens that you got lucky. That happens to be your counselor." But it's been remarkable. And on a very serious note, we have one young 6th grade girl who struggles very seriously with anxiety and was, at first, a cohort, a hybrid student, and then switched to fully remote. Mom made that difficult decision because of the student's anxiety. And she's coming to school, and she hasn't had, missed an in-person day in several weeks now. And she largely started coming to school because she could see Ella at the door. So even if that's the only thing that the dog accomplishes this year, it's been well worth it. And certainly, a bargain for the district, too. We don't have to pay her, you know. So it's been great. But, and Karen, we're very proud of you. I think you know. Karen, it's very difficult to be a teacher these days, and to be able to get your doctorate degree while doing that is quite remarkable. But as many of you in the room there know, she's, it's much more than just intelligence. She's one of those people that's always there when you need her and just a great teammate. So we're proud of being able to work with her as well. And I want to thank all of you for giving us a chance to showcase some of our great talent tonight.
Thanks, Greg. And just through the chair, just before, you know, we send you off into the evening, I just want to applaud both of you again because, you know, these are the things that people don't see. You didn't need to go and get your doctorate, Karen. You did it because you want it, you had a passion for it, you knew better yourself as an instructor. Ultimately, our kids benefit from it. Kim, you didn't have to go above and beyond and pursue the therapy dog piece. You did that on your own. And your two stories are symbolic of so many stories across the Auburn Public Schools that don't often get highlighted to the public. And so thank you very much for coming tonight. I appreciate it. I know you probably have a turkey to stuff or something of that nature. So I'll turn it back to the chair. But again, thank you very much for joining us tonight.
I would just add to that that Mr. Desto also didn't have to change out of his sweats and put a tie on.
That's true, thank you.
For the good of the district. Thank you, Mr. Desto.
My pleasure, Mr. Scobie.
And seriously, thank all of you. You make us proud once again. And enjoy the rest of your evening. As Dr. Hanfield said, I'm sure there's turkeys to stuff or vegetables to peel or something like that. So enjoy your final day before a short break, and well-deserved one. Good evening.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.
Well, that was nice.
Yeah, it's nice to talk about something besides what's next on the agenda.
Can school committee get a therapy dog?
And... We can maybe breathe them if we...
I would love for her to come back once I can actually pet the dog.
Sure.
Take over the, do a little catwalk.
Just walk around.
And I will now move on to the student representatives' report. So nice to see the both of you again. Who's going to go first?
I think Aaron's walking around TJ Maxx.
Aaron, you shopping?
He works there.
They're both on.
Jasmine, you can go for now. I'm gonna take a little breather.
Okay, I was gonna say you could go first because I know you have a break and limited time, but I have no problem going first. Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Hi, Jasmine, how are you?
I'm good, thank you. How are all of you?
Good, it's good to see you after a couple of weeks. Sorry about the text nafus, but we got to figure it out.
No worries. So, so far, overall, things are looking good. From what I've seen, the fall sports teams did a really great job, I think, maintaining guidelines, which is really refreshing to see. As for in-school, going for both cohorts, I'm in Cohort B, so I can't speak on behalf of A. But so far, it seems like it's good that students are comfortable, but it also seems like some students are beginning to forget that this is still a very real concern. Because I've seen, like, less hand sanitizing, more eating in classrooms, less worrying about social distancing, switching seats in classes. And of course, like, most teachers are saying, you know, like, you can't be doing this. But obviously, it's very difficult to catch every single student with what they're doing. Especially, like, at this, like, age, you should be able to focus on it, even though it's still very difficult. So that's the only thing that I see headed in the opposite direction of what we're hoping for. But again, it's not horrible, you know, it's just more common, I feel like. But on the other hand, positivity seems to be, like, really up. It seems like, despite the current circumstances, a lot of clubs are making, you know, the best out of the situation, which is really nice to see. And with the extra time that's been allotted on Zoom for students who need extra help, I've noticed a lot of students that are utilizing that time, which is really great, seeing as how it's been put there for a reason, for them to get extra help even if they're not in the building. So that's really good. And that's really it. So as we near the end of the first trimester, things are still looking really good, which is really great to see. And I don't think there's really been major hiccups. So, yeah, that's basically it.
Thank you.
All right, if I have kind of a very similar thing to say, yes, I'm at work. My break ends in four minutes, but it's all right. I think I can make it with that time. But yeah, I kind of agree. People have gotten a little bit more lax on, like, how they view coronavirus, even though it's gotten worse than it's ever been since we canceled school. But it's just kind of natural. As people kind of get used to this being the normal, people also get more relaxed, and they don't care as much. But our teachers have been good at maintaining everything to be perfectly safe. And I still feel safe, which is good. And I'm pretty happy with how school is working. I can't speak, as Jasmine said, too. I can't speak on behalf of Cohort A because we're both in Cohort B. But so far, everything's going well. As you said as well, a bunch of clubs and extracurriculars are still running as well. Today, in fact, we had our, I believe, our second NHS meeting. Both of us were also there as well. And for NHS, we've been trying to do a lot lately just to kind of get back into what we've been usually doing. So as usual, tutoring is still running. And our two main projects for this season would be our usual adoptive family as well as our military care packages. So although the details haven't been fully established, same as usual, are the delegation of NHS. We're just gonna come in and bring our signed-up items for the families that we adopted, a bunch of gifts. Like, I believe last year, we did a bunch of toys, clothings, bed sheets, and like, other kind of stuff like that just to help make these families and their kids' lives better during this Christmas season. And then same thing for the military care packages. We're trying to do a bunch of, like, utility items as well as more fun items as well. And of course, like, individually wrapped foods and all that to donate to a bunch of military families. So far, we only, we have a limited amount of addresses that we're sending to right now, but we're hoping to expand up to 10 families. So by chance, if you guys have any, Mr. Kennard, Spencer Kennard, Auburn High, you guys know his email. He's looking for other families to donate to. So if you guys have any, or if you guys just know any, don't be shy and just, like, send them over an email. We'd be grateful because we want to help as much as we can and especially during these tough times as well. And honestly, we've, I feel really good about where we are now, especially with, like, technology-wise. A bunch of students, as well as all the administration, all the teachers, have really tried their best to create the best school year for us. And I think it's going pretty well. That's it for me.
Thank you, Aaron. Any comments from the committee?
They're both wonderful. I don't know, very optimistic, and, yeah.
Yep, that was an excellent, excellent report, as always. Thank you for leading it off, Jasmine. Aaron, I don't know if there's a fire drill or something, but...
He's gonna punch back after work.
Okay. The more you give us the tour of Target...
No, it's TJ Maxx.
TJ Maxx, oh.
I like their ceiling.
They're very clean.
But seriously, no, we'll let you get back to work. Thank you for that upbeat report. And Jasmine, thank you for being real with your report and letting us know that, you know, some people may be, you know, being a little bit too lax and getting a little bit too comfortable. So we'll have to, we'll certainly have to look into that as well. But both of you, be safe and enjoy a nice short little break, and we'll get back to it next week, I guess. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks, both of you. Thank you.
Goodbye.
Bye.
To the kids.
Yeah.
All right, I would now entertain a motion to accept the minutes of 11:10.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Let me now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as I had drafted this report for you last week, at the time, we had no, no new COVID cases to report. And as always happens when I say something, the next day, we had two to report. And then today, I needed to send out a notification on another one. So we've had three since last Thursday. You know, in response to the kids, to Jasmine and to Aaron's comments, I was just having this discussion with Mr. DeLongchamp at the high school as I was over there assisting him set up some MCAS information. It's technology-related stuff. We were having this very conversation about, you know, how schools are microcosms of society. And so, you know, as we're seeing, maybe some lax behavior on the outside. We're gonna see some of that on the inside. And so we had a conversation yesterday about how after the holiday, he was gonna have a conversation with people about, again, the importance now more than ever of really adhering to, you know, to COVID guidelines. You know, as Aaron said, cases are up all around us. And, you know, we're walking into a very difficult stretch here potentially. So I think Jasmine was spot on, and so we're addressing that next week with the kids. Also, at our last meeting, we talked about the creation of a COVID dashboard. And I had sent you originally one from another school district, but we were able to actually get ours completed for tonight's meeting. You do have a copy of it in your packets. Ask Dr. Chamberlain if she'd like to kind of speak to it a little bit, how it's structured and...
Yeah, so this is actually, a thing that you use, it's called Data Studio through Google. So it's a free program to use. Thankfully, we have the expertise in Maureen Elliott, a person in our tech department who put the data behind this information to get it to work like it does. And so, yeah, so we thought that, what we wanted it to be was clear, visual, easily understandable by anyone who might want to see it, and it can be easily updated each week by just adding some additional data into a spreadsheet that then feeds into this program. So we did want to, again, reiterate some of the important things that we want people to remember, right? Number one, we're gonna respect confidentiality. We're trying to be transparent. What can everyone do to stay safe? At the bottom of the sheet, you'll see two little squares. I included copies of each of those forms along with that around what to do if you're in close contact or what to do if you've been diagnosed positive with COVID-19. So if people click on those, and, you know, it's like a link to that form. So trying to share as much information as we can. There's also a link to the reopening readiness guide that was started back at the beginning of the year, and links to DESI guidelines and the like. And then you'll see the two paragraphs. One that reflects the number of positive cases that occur each week, and also the number of close contacts for each week, so that we can kind of see what kind of correlation is there. The thing with the close contacts, it's a little bit funky that if you were a close contact November 9, I didn't repound you on November 16 because then we were double pounding things, right? And I will say, I did that initially, and I'm like, well, that's not right. So I went back to that. So, well, there might have been 16 or 18 one week. You know, those carry forward because those close contacts can be out for, you know, up to 14 days. So, but at least it will chart that, it will monitor what's happening. We didn't start that till the 9th based on the data that we were collecting. But, yeah, you know, I welcome your feedback. We want this to be something that the community finds helpful. And, you know, once we hear from you, you know, we'll have it posted in a number of places on the Auburn Public Schools website. And again, it'll be updated each week, at the end of each week, with new data.
Yeah, so through the chair, where this is a, obviously, it's a PDF copy of what we're doing. So if this was live right now, you'd click on this week's start, and it would take you back to the very beginning of September, and you would be able to see it week by week by week by week by week. And then up here, you know, we would then go up and update those numbers, you know, however frequently that we felt like we needed to do it. We didn't want to obviously go live with it until, you know, you were able to see it and, you know, look at it, give your feedback. But, you know, once everything looks good, then we'll be happy to post it live on our main website. And then we'll put links to it in all the school, individual school pages. But I'd like to thank Dr. Chamberlain and especially Maureen Elliott and our tech department. These things, it's really, really well done. And it just, it's not easy to do, to put something like this together. So I applaud both Dr. Chamberlain and Maureen Elliott in our tech department for this because I feel it's extremely comprehensive. It really gives us, I think, the crux of what we were looking for at the conclusion of our discussion two weeks ago. So as Dr. Chamberlain said, you know, we welcome your comment.
Through the chair. I think it, it looks really good. I think it'll be really informative. If I could, and I don't know if this can be possible because of how the absenteeism has been counted now. I think the last piece that would be helpful to know, but that doesn't have to stop this going live. It would be an add-on at some point would be to know how many people at any given point, or week to week, are home because they need to isolate. And it might not be related to, I think that would come from the nurse, the nurses that are getting the calls, like, my child is out because, you know, the husband got ill and we're watching. I think, and I say that not because it's necessarily the school's responsibility to track that, but because I think it gives a very comprehensive picture. It's kind of the last piece, and we would only get that from the nurses, so...
So is that, are you meaning, so who's home because they're in close contact? Or who's home because they're sick?
Who's home because they're a close contact to someone? That may or may not have been a close contact at the school. It just gives us an idea of, like, where is our school population right now? Because if we've got 50 kids each, in each building, just home because from any other contact they might have gotten it, that would be a personal request. I don't know if the committee agrees. I'm just trying to, I guess, get a pulse on really what's going on in the community, if possible.
Well, and definitely, the folks that are listed there as close contacts for those weeks were out of school. So that's one piece of that.
Oh, so they're, and I might be falsely assuming. It is because they were a close contact to someone in our school?
No, it's anything. It could be because their dad came home.
Okay, okay.
So no, it's not just tied to, because we've had, honestly, very, very, very few close contacts within school.
Oh, okay.
Very few. But we've had many that have been identified as close contacts because of those types of situations. You know, their dad was, you know, their dad was identified as being positive or their dad has symptoms. And so even though that still wouldn't be a close contact, you're not a close contact until you're next to somebody that's positive.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but yeah, so those close contact kids would be out of school at least for those weeks. And as I noted earlier, probably longer, I didn't want to count them for both weeks because it really double counts kids and it skews the number. Um, so I thought we would stay with a week to week and then just an overall total number of kids that have been identified as close contact in one way or the other.
Well, could you, would it be possible to add a third comment? It'd be new versus continued. And, and again, it's just trying to get an idea of how many kids are out of our building in a given day. What's the, what is the impact of this pandemic hat, on, of this pandemic having on our ability to have butts in seats? That's.
Yeah, and so my only question, are you also looking for, because what happens with many of these kids is they switch to remote learning.
Oh, okay.
And so they're home, but they're not considered absent. Now, if students are sick, that's when we run into when they might not participate. Um, but they would still participate in school in nearly all of these cases as long as they are asymptomatic.
Sure, no, I, I think that's a, that's a fair question. Where I'm coming from is thinking about what a classroom looks like to our teachers that are in school. So if they're like in the building teaching, so is it a case where they're sitting and teaching to one child and the rest are home because they're quarantining? Because I know that our staff is stretched pretty thin, so I'm more thinking if we can get a big, a better picture now as we're going into flu season, if we need to be able to consolidate, it's more just getting an idea of the landscape as we're gonna move into the flu season. If that's possible, if that doesn't make sense.
It is, we'll have to break it up by cohorts, right? Because that varies.
Yeah, but we can, we can.
By the groups?
Right, but we, we could do that.
We can think, we can take a look at it.
Sure.
It might require a second page to this information, but you can, you can easily add a page with some additional data.
Absolutely, and like I said, if it's not ready, it's more to think about just planning purposes if it, if it's helpful, though, you know, but it doesn't have to stop.
Yeah, and, and just to encourage everybody, as I shared, right? Our attendance rates really have been running around 95%.
That's great.
Give or take a little bit. That's pretty good. Now that takes into account, if you participate remotely, you're considered in attendance, you're considered present.
Right.
So our overall rates have been really, you know, good. Now as far as who's actually, you know, class, in the classroom, I would have to take, that's a different view of that, but we can certainly look at that.
But I think, yeah, and through the chair, just to say, and, and I agree with what you're, with what you're saying, Doc, because I think what we're trying to do too, is we're trying to show the impact of, of, you know, you see a case here, a case there, you think, ah, no big deal. Well, it's got, it, it, it's a ripple effect, right? So you've got a child, so for example, you know, with an athletic issue, we had a child that was positive, well, that impacted 50 some odd people and it also impacted five or six adults, four of whom, you know, taught in our schools. So to, to also be able to kind of show, to tell that picture too, that your actions have, you know, potentially, you know, have, um, you know, have, have widespread, um, impact. So, but yeah, I, I think, I think we could do that too.
Through the chair, it might be something to share with the high schoolers too.
Yes.
Because if they're starting to feel lax, um, being able to see the data might help with that.
So through the chair, thank you very much because that was the other, that was the other discussion point on, on Jasmine's comment was that to use, to be using this data, um, at, at middle and high school.
Yeah.
Because that's where, you know, we're seeing, you know, a lot of prevalence of our cases. You know, so just to review that and to keep it fresh in kids' minds, you know, and, and, yeah, but I, again, I, I think, you know, to, to put, whip this together and, you know, in about a week or so, you know, it, it looks really good and we can get, we can get that other information put up there now. Wading through this, to this point, what was the, was the, was the most difficult part? Now that, now that we know how to do it, um, we should be able to just break that data and put it together, so. And, uh, yeah, and I, I think I, I'm just, I'm really happy with how it came out, so.
Through the chair, thank you so much for doing all this. Um, I'm sure you didn't ever think you'd be doing stuff like this.
You learn a lot in different situations, so good to know.
Thank you, we weren't, we didn't have the luxury of the state of Massachusetts, did not provide this to a lot of school districts. I know other states have just given a template to each of their districts, but we did not have the luxury, so thank you so much.
Yeah, and I will tell you, DESI is tracking, so we have to report our positive cases to the Department of Ed, but how they compile it is not really helpful. You know, I mean, that's, and that's almost the easiest piece of it at this point for positive cases, it's the smaller number to track, but nonetheless, their, their data's not all that helpful with the way they've set it up, so.
And through the chair, it's just a disconnect between, you know, how say DPH looks at it, how schools look at it. That's all it is.
And what people want to know.
What people want to see, so, in any event.
Excellent, thank you for that. That was a very quick turnaround and for a very thorough document, so much appreciated.
Yeah, it's great.
Can we now move on to unfinished business?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, thank you. Just, just quickly, um, just a reminder about our budget. Presentations will take place on, on December 9th. I apologize for the error in date, um, at, at our last meeting. I, I was looking at, thinking of an old document that was first published, um, for school committee dates, so, um, we'll be coming forward, um, as we've done in the past. Um, I will have a kind of a kickoff presentation. Each of the departments will present no more than 10 minutes, uh, and then I'll book in the evening, um, you know, with a closing, uh, presentation and then a summation. Um, we'll have the presentations ready. Uh, Dr. Chamberlain actually had put together the templates and sent them out to, uh, our principals and other departments today, so we will have the presentation on the webpage for people to see, um, now that we've figured out, um, how to, to work this, uh, this technology, uh, from the laptop, from, from this area. Um, more than likely, we will pull the documents up, you know, and have them shown, you know, for people to see at home, but if people want hard copies of them, they'll be available on the website prior to the December 9th meeting. Um, and then finally, uh, before going back to Dr. Chamberlain, uh, we had talked about our, uh, the air quality reports, um, from ATC, uh, and I had reported to you two weeks ago that, um, they continue to be, uh, within, well within range. Um, so I just provided with you the hard copies of that for your review. Um, again, nothing, um, nothing remarkable in those reports at all, uh, so we continue to get good information there and, um, and, and we continue to, uh, to await, um, the delivery of our, um, bipolarization units, uh, which are set to ship next week. So, um, we'll get those into classrooms as soon as we receive them. Um, so that's all I have, Mr. Chair, for that. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we now move on to teaching and learning. Dr. Chamberlain?
Good evening. Yes, thank you. Uh, so just an update, we continue to work at all levels to create a better balance between synchronous and asynchronous learning for our students for some of the reasons that we just talked about, right? We have students that are impacted by COVID-19 in a variety of ways, whether they aren't feeling well because of it or because they've not become a close contact and they have to shift to being at home and we need to get better with that shifting. And so we've been talking a lot about that with the principals and at our meetings and they continue to work on that, to find better ways to go about connecting with kids when they're at home. Um, and so in, in our conversations with principals, what was really interesting and Dr. Handfield brought this up, but he's like, you know, it's really been about six weeks that we've really been in this since, right? That kids have been coming in with the, you know, the cohorts and they've been in buildings and that was really striking to all of us, right? That we've really been living this in a real way for about six weeks, a little bit longer than that. And so when I think about where we started those six weeks ago and where we are now, it's light years, right? And so it's, sometimes we lose sight of that. We lose sight of the amount of progress that's made because we're always trying to get better and we should always try and get better. But it really made me step back and say, we've done a lot of really hard work, these teachers, to really connect with kids in the way they are now, if we think back to what it was like in March, we are in a whole di- different stratosphere right now with what's happening. Um, but just to let everyone know that we continue to try and improve there. We continue to try and improve what we're doing for teachers so that this becomes easier for them to do, likewise, how kids experience it at home. And so I have great faith that in what we've done in the six weeks, um, which seemed, I just could not get over that amount of time because it seems like it's been so much longer than that. Um, what we've accomplished in that amount of time, and I should say, I shouldn't say we, I should say the teachers and the staff in the buildings, you know, I really look forward to where we're heading in maybe just another few short weeks from now. So I just want you and the community at large to know that we know we have to continue to get better, but we've made a lot of great progress up to now and we'll continue to do that, both for the benefit of the teaching staff and the students. So, um, yeah, just, just an update on that. And it must be a night for Auburn Middle School, uh, because another request Dr. Handfield has that each time we have a meeting, that we'll put a little spotlight on something happening at a particular school. And I know I had previously mentioned to you some of the training that had taken place at Auburn Middle School on the last professional development day, but what I've heard since then from a lot of staff is how great it was and how it's now coming into fruition in a lot of classrooms. And again, this was all homegrown information. So I shared with you that Danielle LaBeauf did a whole presentation on Jamboard, which is a virtual whiteboard, and she nicely invited me into her classroom so I could participate, which again was like the greatest part of my day to see kids and see a teacher teaching and talking about learning. It was just fantastic. And it was so interesting to me that she was talking about, um, plate tectonics and some thing, you know, and how rocks move and all of that, and somebody put in the chat about, well, did you feel the earthquake a couple of weeks ago? And they started their own little conversation about it and it was just, it was real learning and the kids were great and she had her students in her classroom, so it was all happening in a synchronous way and it was just, it was just great to see. Um, and also there was some work on Jessica Young provided training on Kami, which is a way to annotate student work so you can provide real feedback. Padlets, another way for students to share their thoughts. Um, that's something I use as a, um, for my newsletter out to staff, it's almost like sticky notes that you can put up, which is great. They get training on Peer Deck and Near Pod. Um, John Bastian and Kim Moran, using multiple screens to better engage the kids in the classroom. And, you know, again, these are people who didn't have to do it, did it on their own, took the time to put the presentation together, but what's now even better is that work is spreading. And so while we continue to focus, obviously as we should, on the impact of COVID and what it's doing to schools, I just felt it was really important to be able to share that there's a lot of good things that teachers are doing on their own, for the kids and for one another, and good teaching and learning is still happening every day. So, that's my spiel for tonight, Mr. Scobie.
Well, that was, that was excellent and, and I would agree, it's, it's impressive how far we've come and due to the dedication of all of you and all of our teachers and all of our support staff. Um, it's, it's really fantastic and, and we knew before that, that, um, everyone in this school community was dedicated, but it's, it's ever true now. I mean, it's really, it's, it's special and they go to these lengths, um, for our kids. They, they go to these lengths for, for our children, they don't do it for their own benefit and that's not why they, you know, they stuck outside of their comfort zone and learn these things. It's all, all about our children and for that, you know, that's much appreciated. Any other comments?
Through the chair, I, I just do want to say thank you to all of the teachers and I have to say, I, I think this might have been Buddy's best year. And I think it is because, at least in our house, because they're learning so much in the classroom and engaging with the kids that are also online when they're not there. There really isn't a lot of homework, but they're getting so much out of that split screen feel. It's just a totally different way of learning and I, I, I don't know, I, I have an enthusiastic learner again and I wish I would have known or thought what had happened during a pandemic year, but it shows, you know, that they're putting a lot of heart into it, so as a parent, I just thank you.
That's great to hear.
Yeah, through the chair, I can tell you, my, I was, um, talking with a teacher who's a friend of mine who was just talking about how different of a year it is and how she hopes the culture is still there at pack. And I said, you know, my son has never ran faster to get to his kindergarten teacher than I've ever seen, so mask and all, huge backpack with all this stuff and he just books it and he loves going, so, um, they're doing something right and it's amazing. And yeah, and learning's happening too, so he's already writing up to 50 in a COVID year.
That's awesome.
That's awesome. And also the generosity of, of the committee with what we've been able to offer for tools. I mean, it really is a true team effort, so.
Absolutely.
Some good news.
I have one comment through the chair. Um, it's the nature of the beast with being on the committee. You hear a lot of, uh, complaints and concerns and, you know, there were a lot in the beginning and I have to say, like, my phone has been silent to the point where I'm like, oh my, maybe I'm like, you know, like, did they lose my number or something? No, but it's been great and my kids love, love being in the building, even though my oldest is like, we can't move, we have masks on, but that kid can't wait to go into school and, you know, be out of the house and doing what she's doing. Both of them are learning like dots, they're just learning so much, it's like way more than I ever expected, so thank you. I mean, the difference is huge and it goes, it doesn't go unnoticed for sure.
And like I said, people, they're still trying to get better, you know what I mean? So it's not like, oh, well, we're here now, it's all good. The work still goes on, but, you know, we said to the principals, you've just got to remind everybody of all the work you've done and how far you've come, right? Because we always get into like, well, it's not good enough, but we're, we're doing great right now and we're gonna keep, we're gonna keep doing that.
Just the other day, my daughter was zooming in on the class and the teacher said, so starting next week, it's gonna be a little different because I'm bringing this into it and she got off the call and said, they're gonna do something crazy with another screen and all this stuff. I'm like, oh yay, you know, sometimes. But, um, yeah, no, it's everyone. And then to, you know, just whip this out on top of everything else, it's so impressive what you guys are doing, I mean, truly, so thank you.
Great, awesome, thank you.
Thank you. That was great. Well, that's a tough act to follow, but not for something. More uplifting than a Hallmark Christmas movie.
It's not gonna be my words exactly, Mr. Scobie. It is a tough act to follow.
Well, I thought you were the uplifting part.
I am proud to be part of this team. You're doing wonderful work with the staff and everyone's working really hard and it's just great to have your support, like Dr. Chamberlain said, um, you're, you're great to work with, so.
And it's nice to have someone to pay the bills too.
That's the boring part, right?
No. It's the important part.
We would be back to single screens without it.
And we are doing, you know, we're doing well, I mean, for having to take in the budget cut that we did, um, but we are, we are doing and we're managing very well. And, um, Dr. Handfield and I are meeting regularly, we go over the budget and make sure everything's in place. So I have tonight for you a budget report, um, and it's dated, um, November, um, November 18th, sorry, I should put my glasses on. And I also have, um, so it's a year-to-date budget and in addition with that, I have a, um, budget transfer with, um, the majority of the transfers being with, between the same series or within the same series and one actually being between two different series. But, um, and I ask for your approval of that, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
I want to entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the transfers between series as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Are there any questions or discussion for Cecilia?
What you do is important too, just remember that.
Thank you very much.
We are thankful.
Thank you, thank you.
And uplifting.
Well, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, this is a vote, thank you. Can we now move on to policies?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just, uh, recently, uh, you may have heard in the news, some changes to Title IX regulations, um, at the federal level. Um, this updated policy is endorsed by the Mass Association of School Committees. Um, and really what, what this, uh, the changes to Title IX do is, is, is they really, um, strengthen the language, um, around harassment and, and the various forms of harassment,